Music, um, the school has had, the school has had a couple concerts happen. On November sixteenth, the Wind Ensemble and Symphony Orchestra, they performed. On November twenty-ninth, the high school choirs, mixed choir and, um, the, yeah, mixed choir and other choir, forgot their name, and the eighth grade course, they had a concert, they performed pretty well there. And December seventh will be the symphonic band and eighth grade band and the other orchestras. Will, they'll also have a concert on December seventh. The SAT was on Saturday, December second, that, that went pretty well. And student government, the student government will be planning on doing a raffle, which it will further involve students and fundraise to help our cause to make the school a better place. The class of two thousand twenty-one is doing a popcorn fundraiser to support their club as it plays a major role in organizing some events in the future and near future and what's gonna happen later as well. December fifteenth will be the end of the second interim marking period and report cards will be available on School Tool on December twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda this evening is public comment number one and we do have one individual signed up this evening, that's Andrea Lilly. And in accordance with our policy, I would ask that you keep your comments between two to five minutes. Thank you.
Um, I guess this is our first time approaching the board, so we sent an email. I don't know if everybody had read or it was disseminated regarding the athletic placement process policy.
Not yet, um, Ms. Hayes has it, but we'll send it along.
Oh, okay. Um, so we were just, uh, we were approached by Coach LaValle for our son who is in seventh grade currently, um, to move to and to classify him to play freshman baseball, um, in the season of two thousand eighteen. And we, um, received the phone call from Coach LaValle saying that he couldn't get him classified because currently he was in seventh grade. Um, he's in modified basketball and we received the student code of conduct and in it was the definition of the athletic placement process. And, which stated that in the sense he could be placed within the freshman, but I guess Dylan has a, uh, sub-policy that says that seventh graders cannot go to a freshman level sport, um, within a contact sport, which baseball I guess is. Um, we just wanted to kind of put it to the board to explore, um, a potent, I don't know how long ago it's been looked at, it seems like the policy was made many, many years ago, um, or that sub-policy was made many, many years ago. So, we didn't know if it could be revisited, we would obviously like the opportunity, um, for it to be revisited because the, um, placement process does, um, it encourages students to play to their ability, um, regardless of age or grade. Um, so, we would like that opportunity for, for our son, um, and many others that potentially could be in the situation, but looked at on a case-by-case basis versus just a broad generalization.
Okay.
I don't know what else to say.
Great.
That's fine. Oh, um, well, you can go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Chad Lilly, um, Jackson's dad. What we're looking at also, I, I, I think it's the biggest thing here is, is it's about safety, um, which we totally understand and we agree with. But as far as this situation, um, our son is, he's a September first, uh, is his birthday. So he was, he could be in the eighth grade, we started him, we, he went to private school for a year when he was in kindergarten and we started him, um, late because we didn't want him the youngest, the younger side, plus I figured when he, when he graduated high school, he would be younger going off to college, he'd be driving with other kids sometimes. Uh, we thought through the whole process and figured for a boy, it'd be probably better to start him a little later if he's on the line. So, by doing that, he's also playing with kids like he played the state championship, he's played on that team that won the states for two years, three years. Um, he's with the kids, the eighth graders, he plays with that team. He also plays a travel team where we go, it's, it's a little crazy, he plays a lot of games, we travel around and play a lot of very good teams in the area down in New Jersey and all over. Uh, so he's played with the older group and he's done really well. Um, and we kind of want him, keep him in, in a group where he's gonna be, he's gonna, he's going to, um, not only, um, enjoy, but he's also going to, um, develop the most. Um, the other thing is the field now, like last year we went to Cooperstown, he went there just recently, he was, the field is sixty-foot bases with forty-six inch, forty-six feet pitchers mound. And the fields now are bigger going with these, for these kids going to freshman and, and, and modified, where now that they're ninety-foot bases and the pitcher's mound is sixty feet. So, and the bats are now BB core, which is like a wood bat, they're, they're slower, the, they're heavier, so the ball's not as fast, the, the field's bigger, so these kids are really kind of small for this field. I mean, I'm sorry, they're, yeah, the kids are small for the field, the field's very big, large for them. So the ball is not, you know, as far as hitting, like when they're twelve years old, they hit the ball pretty hard at, at forty-six feet, and the pitchers are kind of, it could be, they should probably push it back because the bats are more advanced, the kids are stronger, um, in, in Little League. Now we're in, going into, um, modified and freshmen, they're playing on a, on a major league field. So it's a lot larger and the ball's a lot slower. We've already experienced, he's on a travel team and you, you can see the ball is, is, it doesn't travel as fast, um, the game is a lot slower for the kids now. So, I think for safety reasons, there's, there's two or three, um, safety issues that are in the favor of our son because of where, you know, his age and also the field size, et cetera.
Again, that's where it could be looked at as a, on a case-by-case basis where that doesn't maybe apply to other sports and other ages and other children, but just to be looked at in terms of, eh, on an individual basis versus blanketing the entire student.
Yeah, and, and lastly, it was, Coach LaValle has known Jackson, he's, he's, cause this, this group was a special group that went to the state championship and he's been coaching them and, and, and with him for the last three years, three or four years, and he knows them really well. And he ca- called me and said he'd like to have Jackson on the team, but he couldn't classify him. So we're just trying to have you come, maybe look at the case, um, individually to see if there's any possibilities.
Sure. Um, Dr. Wiles and I will share the email with the rest of the board.
I just did.
Okay.
Could you ask what position?
And see if it's something that we can send to our policy committee for review and possible modification. Um, what position does?
I was just wondering what position?
Jackson play?
He plays usually, uh, middle infield, which is second or shortstop, but he can play, you know, and, and I understand he moves up and we've told him this, you might be in the outfield, you might not play as much, but, um, you know, and he, he's, he, I think hitting, he'll do pretty well. Um, but again, if it's, 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 we understand, he has to, he'll be younger, he'll have to play to wherever they need him. So, um, I, I don't think he will be playing shortstop probably with, with, I don't know, I, I've coached some of those kids at that level. When he was, when he was ten, he played with the twelve-year-olds in Little League and he did well and it'll be the same, same boys that he's gonna be playing with in freshman. So, um, I coached his team during that timeframe and, and he was, he fit in very well. We went to, we won the local around here, we went to, to, to what they call city county, city county and different, different tournaments and, uh, he seemed to do well, so I think he'll fit in.
Great. Yeah, thank you for coming in and we will definitely be in touch with you as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget development presentation, Neil?
Okay, thank you. Well, continuing our dialogue on the development of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, we have what's called a budget outlook tonight, a few topics, uh, that we want to share at this time of the year, uh, surrounding our development of budget and what we know and don't know at this point. So the first thing we always like to focus on is enrollment and staffing and what's the interplay between those two, so it's important for us to be able to project enrollments and then see how that affects our, our sections and our staffing at the teacher level. So for next year, we're looking at an increase, projecting an increase of ninety-two students at the elementary level. At the middle school level, we're expecting a drop of thirty-three students and at the high school level, a drop of fourteen students. So overall, we're looking at an increase of forty-five students K-12. At the elementary level, where we have class size sections, we're looking at an increase of seven teachers, seven additional sections, and our average class size would be twenty across the board at all schools. And that at the middle school, our average class size would be twenty-four point nine, given the numbers that I shared previously. Also at the elementary level, we do assign teaching assistant time at the kindergarten and first grade level, so again, looking at the sections where those students are projected to be, we would need to add a halftime teaching assistant at the elementary level in addition to the seven teachers. And again, this is based on purely on enrollment, not on any student needs that may arise as well. Also, we looked at what would a ten-year enrollment projection look like and going out and seeing what the patterns and trends would be. So you can see over the next ten years, projected data is to see growth, continued growth in enrollment across the district. For the next ten years, it's not, increases a little higher level, in the first three years, drops down a little bit, goes back up a little bit, and then at the tenth year, it's projected to be our smallest increase of twenty-three students. It's nice to see this graphically and look at it by level, which you couldn't see from the previous slide, that was just by total of the district, so at the elementary level, bottom line, you can see there's kind of a progression of continued growth, uh, for about seven or eight years before it levels off. At the middle school level, it's pretty flat, declines a little bit over the first five years and then starts to rise slowly and a little, accelerates a little bit more the last two years. And at the high school level, we'll see about five years of growth and then a little decline and leveling off at that level. As far as revenues go, we don't know a lot at this point. Uh, we do know there's issues at the state and federal level and we're looking to see how that shakes out at this point. New York State does actually project their financial status mid-year, November, and we do have that data available, so New York State, when they're looking at their expenses and revenues, they're projecting a budget deficit next year of one point seven billion and then in nineteen twenty, eight hundred ninety-four million and nineteen twenty, three hundred and twenty million. So they're looking at a def- a deficit situation based on current revenue projections and current expense projections. At the federal level, as you know, a lot of discussion about the federal budget and about the federal tax bill, so a lot of uncertainty at the federal level. Just to share, we do receive one point five million annually in federal grants, so again, how that could possibly affect that number and our ability to continue to receive that level of grant funds, uh, we'll need to wait and see, uh, what that bears. And also, as the federal budget goes, it does have some impact at the state level, so that could also be another factor with state aid and future state revenue. In terms of the property tax growth factor, we do have preliminary information on this. This is a tracking of the Consumer Price Index for the calendar year two thousand seventeen through October. The Consumer Price Index is, is at two point zero one percent. People that analyzed this said that it's very likely that we'll end the year in December at two percent and that's the maximum under the property tax cap that, um, our property tax base can grow. So that's good news for the district, it's been near zero in some years, it's been in the middle and, uh, a couple times it's been at the upper end of two percent, so this looks like it's going to be one of those years where we'll have two percent growth in our tax levy. Terms of expenditures, again, very preliminary, we do know a couple of things, we do know with certainty our debt payments and they're projected to go down about five hundred nineteen thousand dollars, so there'll be savings in the budget in that particular area. We do know about some upcoming changes with employer mandated retirement system contributions. We haven't been able to cross them out yet, we're still working on salaries for next year, but the teacher's retirement system contribution rate for employers is expected to increase from nine point eight percent to between ten and a half and eleven percent, so I'm using ten point seven five for illustration here. In terms of the employer's retirement system, they're projecting a decrease from fifteen point three percent to fourteen point nine percent. So we have two systems, both invested in the stock market, uh, one's projected to go up and one's projected to go down. And so we'll have to analyze the impact of that as we get farther along in the budget So, we wanted to share where we are in the budget development process. So on October twenty-fourth, we did have public input for budget development. Tonight, we'll be getting board direction for the budget development process. And in December and January, we're working with administrators who are developing budgets within their buildings and departments and they will be presenting the rest, those requests to the district office administrative team for review during this time. As always, community input is welcome and encouraged throughout the budget process and need more information, please go to the budget, budget news and information page on the district's website and click on the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget input feedback form link and you can type in whatever information you'd like to share and we'll have that available to us and to the Board of Education. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Neil? Okay, thank you Neil.
Thank you.
And so now we move on to the board direction portion of the agenda where the board will provide direction for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget. Um, does anybody want to start the conversation? If we can start it on one end and go around the table? Do you want to start Gloria?
Sure. Okay, we were asked to, uh, kind of put together some priorities. My first priority that I listed related to, um, district priority number three, which involves intellectually challenging and academically accomplished students. I would support that we as a board continue to support and grow the inclusion efforts at the high school through all the grade levels, so we begin to continually push that through all grade levels. The emphasis on professional development, co-teaching and looking at class size if we're going to move in that direction. Priority number two, I related also to the same district priority and, uh, I would like to see us support efforts at the middle school to continue to build inclusive communities by developing and growing the co-teaching model. That has been extremely successful, we've seen that, um, at the elementary and at the high school, so I'd like to, and, and at the middle school. So if we want to continue that whole process of building inclusive classrooms, I, I'd like to see us, uh, grow that co-teaching model. And I think one of the major needs we need to look at is the, uh, lowering the class size at Farnsworth if we're going to move in that direction. In terms of a third priority, um, relating to both district priority two, which is, um, under the concept of globally aware and connected student, uh, citizenry and also the same district priority three, uh, intellectually challenging students and academically challenging students, um, I'd like to see us look at the best practices that, uh, we've highlighted some during our board meetings, uh, particularly the success at, uh, Linwood with regard to the, um, the reading, the literacy program there, uh, but anywhere we've noticed that there has been some programs put in place that we would consider best practice, uh, see if we can, if there are opportunities to replicate it, if the situations in other schools, uh, would benefit from replicating those kinds of programs, like the instructional coaching which we talked about. And district, uh, my, my fourth priority relates to district priority one, which is creating a healthy, safe and engaged community. I'd like to continue us talking about the later start times, especially for the high school. Uh, this might mean increasing the bus fleet so that students are dropped off closer to the actual start of school rather than the safety concern of them being there so early and waiting for school to start. And lastly, relating to both district priorities one and two, um, continue to work on building in all our schools respectful communities, appreciation of diversity and intellectual risk-taking, uh, exploration and problem-solving. And, um, those were my kind of top focus areas. We were asked to respond to the questions of, under what circumstances would we recommend that the district attempt to exceed the tax levy limit? I put down only as a last resort. And then we were asked in general, what is our recommendation regarding use of the fund balance as a revenue source for this coming budget? Uh, my recommendation is to use as little as possible. I support keeping a fund balance of around four percent, which is what we are allowed to keep. Any amount above that percentage should be used to support educational programming.
Great, thank you. Judy?
Uh, my priorities, my first priority is perhaps it's selfish, but I'd like to see us start to rebuild TA positions, I think that makes a huge difference, um, to students. I see it when I, I go in as a volunteer and work and I, I am sorry that that's something that we've lost because I, I think it makes an enormous difference. My, my second priority is, uh, more support or continued strong support for the focused students in the class and the community endeavors and this is in, um, keeping our students globally aware. At the November luncheon after community service, it, it's clear how much the community service means to these kids and I'm hoping that we can continue to, um, find ways to have them being out and successful in the community. Another priority I have, um, is when we saw the, the coaching of, the coaching model, uh, what a difference it's made in the school atmosphere and the student achievement. And I think it would be worthwhile, um, to set other elementary schools on this path. It's a long-term goal, I know, and I, I assume that it's, uh, an expensive one, but I think it's worth the investment, it shows in the results, um, as we saw from Linwood. Uh, my priority four was, uh, it sounds like we need to reinstate secondary teacher leaders and I think that's probably good. I think a lot of our administrators are overloaded and if we can, um, help to get back to that, that would be good. And another priority was to expand our, um, co- current co-teaching models. Having been in the classroom just once and seen how wonderful it is with, with the kids working, um, we were in there seeing something else, but as, as I, I watched, you can't see who the students are, who are in need of help and you can't see who the teachers, nobody's hovering around everybody and I think all students benefit from that. It was a wonderful experience for me. Uh, my, a couple of other things that I've, I've added just quickly, inclusion, I think we need to continue on that. I think we need to be concerned about class size at Farnsworth, just, we gotta be able to, to have all the kids able to work in, in science labs. It, I, I wasn't sure, this, this came to me after I'd done it, but we have a couple of, of, um, full-time substitutes on our payroll and because then, once they're full-time, we, we have to pay them, uh, benefits, but I think it's valuable in this day and age when substitutes are getting harder and harder to find. And also something that, that I, this was just a sort of a late PS, the, um, gender-neutral bathrooms that we, um, started here at the high school and in middle school and in one of our elementary schools. I'm, I'm not sure if we have to, to build more, but if, at least if we can find places and make it part of perhaps the new, uh, programs that were the new, uh, program when we have a new bond issue, it might be something to look at. Under what circumstances would you recommend district attempt to exceed the tax levy? Levy, at this limit, at this time, um, none, but, uh, things are in a great state of flux and I can't say that would be permanent. And, uh, using the, um, fund balance, as little as possible. And I said, I, keeping it close to the maximum has served us well. However, with the new resolution to put money toward the next referendum costs, uh, if we had to use a little bit of the fund balance money, um, then we wouldn't have to tap into it later perhaps. That was a lot and I'm sorry, but, but, thinking of all those things, they came later.
Yeah, that was great, thank you. Kathy?
Okay, well, um, Neil did, did his presentation about the Cobblestone School recently, so I put that as a priority, knowing that, um, it's probably a controversial, um, thing for this board at this time, but, um, I think that really the priority for the board should be thinking about, um, the value or not the value, if, if that's your opinion of having students, um, have an experience in a physical place, um, that, um, is that historic and dates back to, um, essentially the beginning of public school in the state of New York. So, um, if the board is willing to have that discussion about what the building should be used for and that it has value in education, um, then I think it follows that, um, it would be worthwhile to spend some money now for, um, the long-term for future, um, students and current students to enjoy, um, actually experiencing, um, being in that space and, um, in studying about what education was like, um, in that time. So, that's just something that I was thinking about and I think it's really gonna be up to the board to, to think about that as far as what, what the building, what the schoolhouse should be used for in terms of, um, the education of students and then from there, um, decide to fix it so that it can be used. And, let's see, my second priority was, um, to maintain, uh, staffing at the high school so that we could offer all motivated students, um, rigorous classes. Um, I was a bit taken aback that, um, I think there was an essay contest to, for kids to get into a particular class that they wanted to take and I thought that was, um, kind of a bit much because you would think that anybody who's motivated to take a rigorous class should be able to do it. And whether or not they're, they're recommended is something to consider, but also, I think there's been enough written about, I mean, I guess you'd call it grit or stubbornness or, um, perseverance, uh, that that's also a very, uh, strong factor in, um, success. So, I mean, I, I would just like to see that, that there would be enough sections of these classes that, that every student who wanted to take a rigorous class could do so. And, let's see, um, I also had a priority about, um, replacing, um, aging playground equipment and making sure that the children have a safe area and adequate time to play outside because, um, there's been a lot written about the importance of recess and outdoor play and, um, it's, it would, you know, I think we should, we should make that a priority. And my other, my fourth priority is to continue to provide and to enhance, uh, world cultural opportunities, um, and I just mentioned foreign language instruction and the arts and, uh, I think we should continue that. Priority five is just to make sure that we provide enrichment opportunities for all of our students. And, under what circumstances would I recommend that attempt, attempt to exceed the tax levy limit and I, I just, my comment was if our programs could not otherwise be funded without significant compromise to educational quality. I mean, I think that would be, uh, an argument to do it. And for, uh, fund balance, I just said as little as possible. I mean, I know we used more this year because of the equalization rate change, I'm not sure what's gonna be our circumstance for next year, so, um, we'll just have to, um, to be announced, I guess.
Thank you Kathy. Teresa?
Um, I had, uh, as my first priority, class size maximums, especially at the elementary level, need to be reassessed as to not have another Altamont Pine Bush revisit. Class size is important to learning environment, especially in the age of inclusion. Dr. Fiero had shown cause for concern in regards to simple safety and lab class sizes at F, at the FMS level. Uh, my second priority was figuring out where we lack, that placed us eighth in the business review and putting funding in that realm to get us to the top three. My third priority was funding our athletic department. Booster clubs are having to raise thousands of dollars to keep our current standards and I actually did delve into what the booster club is collecting monies for and it's nothing out of the ordinary. I think if we didn't collect the monies that we did... I think if we didn't collect the monies that we did, you kind of have the bad news bears in how people, how the students look. So I just think that if we could put some more money towards that, that would be good so that they wouldn't have to raise the money that they do. Priority number four, this has been a big issue for me just because I've had one student go through FMS and another one that's there now and another one that'll be going. The parking lot is horrendous there. I mean, it's, it's not just me, it's everyone I've ever spoken to at FMS has complained about the parking lot, and it was fixed trying to address an issue, and yet it, I have to literally pick up my daughter 15 minutes before dismissal to not get stuck in that. And I don't know if there is anything that we can do with the district office that was there, if, once that's eliminated, if we can reroute traffic. I think that's really what the backup is, is just getting out of there. It backs up because there's only so much traffic that can come in and out. I don't know if that could be addressed at all, but that was a big bane to my existence there. Number five was additional funding for programming and/or staff for children with special needs. I'm always hearing something about that, so I'd like to see if that could be addressed. Under what circumstances would I recommend that the district attempt to exceed the tax levy limit? I said that I just find our current circumstances to be reasonable and find it virtually impossible, barring a natural disaster, disaster, to exceed the tax levy limit, so I think we can keep it as-is. And as for the fund balance, I'd recommend using the same, if not a little bit more if necessary, since we're currently very close to the max amount allowed for, you can't go over that 4%, and we were at 3.97, I believe. So, that's my two cents.
Great, thank you. Barb?
Okay, I'm gonna sort of synthesize things and not go exactly as the paper does here. I guess one of my, my big things was to increase the sign language offerings at the Farnsworth Middle School and at the high school. It is recognized as a foreign language applicable in many phases in life, and I think it'd be a tremendous addition, you know, to our curriculum. In addition to that, the Italian sections that are being requested, I think, you know, we should continue to grow in the language, and apparently it's a very popular thing right now, and, you know, I would support that as well. Topping everything off, I think, is the whole issue of class size, not just at the middle school, but, you know, at the elementaries as well. Recognizing that, you know, with the inclusion model, the teacher's role becomes even more difficult, I think. And so I would really like to see us take a real close look at class size this year, and not, as I said, not just at the elementary school, but at the, particularly at the middle school. We have heard for years about the lack of safety in the labs, so hopefully we can address that. So I've synthesized a couple of my things. Number three, I had technology. I specifically mentioned bringing Project Lead the Way to the Farnsworth Middle School. We've talked about that a lot. I know Damian's done a lot with our superstructure, our infrastructure, and I really want to maintain that and keep us current. And I know we've gotten some from the technology bond fund, but, you know, just to keep on that same road. And then number four, I had as increasing enrichment time. We've sort of addressed different parts of our student body, and we added a little bit of an enrichment time last year, so if our budget were to permit it, I would really like to expand that. And this is a dream, but it probably won't become a reality, but I would love to have us look again at the foreign language for the little kids. We know they're like little sponges, we know we started the program, and, I mean, people like Albany have it, and I would just love to see us do it. I realize it may be a pipe dream, but. And the other thing, really, we've got to work on later school start times. We may only be able to address it, you know, this year with the, with the high school, you know, at least ringing them school, not a half an hour earlier or whatever, but as Gloria, I think, pointed out, if we need more buses to do that, then I think we have to bite the bullet. I mean, it is really ridiculous getting the kids there that early and basically wasting their time, so that is sort of a priority of mine. On the tax levy limit, should we try to exceed it? I say probably never. And on the keeping our fund balance, I think we've done a great job with it. I want to keep it as close to 4% as we can. It really bailed us out when we hit those hard times. I don't use it, you know, basically the way we've been using it.
Great, thank you. Seema?
My first priority was class size across the district, and then I had specifically at Farnsworth, and then at the third grade section at Pine Bush, which we couldn't, we couldn't help this, this current year. That's my first one. The second one was basically co-teaching support, TA support, and then I put in any support to help the social and emotional wellness of students, so that could be programming, like sources of strength. I don't know what that lunch thing they had at Farnsworth was called, the title for that, with people sat with everybody.
Mix it up.
Yeah, Mix it up Day. And then also the focus program at the high school. Any, basically any programming to help social and emotional wellness of students, that's number two. Number three, enrichment, I guess this relates to the intellectually challenged and academically accomplished priority. So enrichment, continue as-is at the elementary or add more, and also like Project Lead the Way to have that at Farnsworth. So I didn't put my numbers in order. Number four, restoring the teams at Farnsworth. I think there's, some grades are half-teams, so restoring them back to full teams, I think at seventh and eighth grade. And then lastly, FTEs, as to avoid the situation this year. Oh, yeah. Possibly.
Sure, you have comments on the tax levy?
Oh, I'm sorry. For the fund balance, I said as little as possible, and the tax levy, I said, like Kathy said, only to keep the programming the same if that were, you know, to happen, otherwise no. Tim emailed Christine and I his comments about the budget. I'll just read the general ones, and then he can, I guess.
Yeah, there will be opportunities to elaborate further, so.
For the specifics.
Yep.
He said, "My biggest budget concerns are class size, restoring more TAs across the district, having a tax strategy on eradicating the drug culture at high school and middle school." He said philosophical and budget item, I think, technology updates, continued support of music, sports, the arts, and other opportunities to make well-rounded students." And then he wrote details, but I'll let him say that next time.
Great, thank you. Okay, in no particular order. I guess kind of like Seema said, supporting the social and emotional wellness of our students. I wanted to look at playground safety, making sure we had those assistant coaches, as has come up in previous years. Like Judy said, looking at additional opportunities for gender-neutral bathrooms and changing areas, providing support for Dutchman committed and sources of strength as needed, additional school counselors if needed, additional TAs, and of course, smaller class sizes seems to be an issue that's come up multiple times this year. I know we received an analysis of our class size, but just making sure that we're looking for those areas that are right on the cusp, so that might mean building in additional unassigned FTEs for next year to address that. Also trying to look at later start times, which may mean additional buses, but that also means additional drivers, and I don't know if that's possible right now. The focus program. I'd also like to look at continuing to develop additional community partnerships so that our students have opportunities to participate in activities in the community. Let's see, additional instructional coaches, I think was a priority for a lot of people in the district. And then providing professional development opportunities and, of course, keeping up to date with our technology. In terms of the fund balance, I said I would like to use as little as possible, and at this point, I wouldn't recommend or support the district's attempts to exceed the tax levy limit. So, does anybody have any follow-up comments to this, or do you think we've provided pretty good direction to the district office team? Murray?
In the pot of gold. Maybe the rainbow will end right there.
Well, we have a lovely picture of Gilderlin Elementary School that Alan brought to his Stage Two meeting of a rainbow over Gilderlin Elementary School. It was perfect, and I asked him, I said, "So is there a pot of gold at the end?" So I think, I mean, obviously, these are some outstanding ideas that it's very easy to get behind, but there is no way in the world we can do all of them. So we'll need continued guidance about which of these things rise to the top because we won't be able to do them all. So you all know that, but I thought I'd say it.
I think there was quite a bit of overlap in between, so if we could kind of hit the high points or the major, you know, cross-sections of what people had said. A good starting point. Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm missing on the kids.
That was me.
I just wanted, because the basketball let up soon if it wasn't someone here.
Thank you.
Mr. Lutzick, I thought you were going to be asking for something during the budget development process here.
All right, so with no further comments or questions, we can move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, which consist of the minutes of the November 14th meeting, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, the financial, and the financials. Barbara, second. Kathy, are there any questions or comments about all this information? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven-zero. And now we move on to information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thank you very much. I'd like to start by offering congratulations to all of our fall sports teams for qualifying for the 2017 Scholar-Athlete Team Award. As you've heard before, to qualify, each team has to maintain a 90% team average or above. The teams recognized for this season are the Boys and Girls Cross Country, Football Cheerleading, Field Hockey Football, Boys and Girls Soccer, Girls Swimming and Diving, Girls Tennis, Boys and Girls Volleyball, and Golf. Next, I have an announcement for you, and it's an invitation as well. Included with your materials is a flyer announcing a special screening of the film Screenagers. This film will serve as a critical resource for a community event that will be hosted by the district called Growing Up in the Digital Age. The film probes into the vulnerable corners of family life, including struggles over social media, video games, academics, and internet addiction. Through poignant and unexpectedly funny stories, along with surprising insights from authors, psychologists, and brain scientists, Screenagers reveals how technology time impacts child development and offers solutions on how adults can empower children to best navigate the digital world and find balance. In addition to the film, we will have a panel of students from Farnsworth Middle School and Gilderlin High School who will assemble to provide critical student perspectives and engage in discussions with the audience. The district will also be conducting a digital life survey throughout the month of December to gather some local data about our school community's use and attitudes toward, use of and attitude toward media and technology. The results will provide a solid foundation for engaging parents and our school stakeholders in important conversations about technology and media. And this event will be, has been scheduled for 7:00 p.m. on January 30th at Farnsworth Middle School, and we've already started communications through our communication specialist, and additional communications will occur throughout the months of December and January. So please mark your calendars. Next, I do have a textbook for your information. It is entitled Everything You Need to Know to Ace American History in One Big Fat Notebook. It's an easy read and very student-friendly language, recommended from our social studies cabinet and our middle school social studies department, so it is for your information. And next, I'd like to extend congratulations to Gilderlin High School junior Ryan Miller, who won the National American Legion Auxiliary, Auxiliary Americanism Essay Contest. North Albany American Legion Auxiliary President Judy Benner and Americanism Chairman John Precopia presented a certificate and prize to him for his winning entry. So congratulations to Ryan. And lastly for me tonight, the Gilderlin Music Department is proud to announce that 10 students have been recognized for the New York State Band Directors Association. Each year, from hundreds of applicants, honor bands are chosen based on their NISMA score from the previous spring. Each ensemble rehearses and performs during the New York State Band Directors Annual Symposium, which is held at the Syracuse Convention Center from March 2nd through 4th of 2018. Selected to perform in the high school honor band under the direction of Dr. Jennifer Bill from Boston University are Aiden Fusco on trumpet, Hugh Smith on tuba, and Tracy Way on flute. Performing with the middle school honor band are Paterana Dilne on clarinet, Melody U on clarinet, William Angus on tenor saxophone, and Bailey Yerdan on percussion. Dr. Milt Allen will conduct the middle school honor band. And performing in the jazz ensemble under the direction of Dr. Sharon Mariko are three trombonists, Aiden Doyle, Catherine Giordano, and Vivian Redmond. And selection to these prestigious ensembles demonstrates exceptional musicianship as an, I can't speak tonight, an outstanding accomplishment. So we do want to extend congratulations to these fine players and their teachers, Mrs. Kathleen Ellinger, Mr. Lee Russo, and Mrs. Alexis Siamak.
Great, thank you. Sure, Teresa?
Damian, the Scholar-Athlete Team Awards, when you list here that, like, football, field hockey, tennis, golf, they're all levels, so all of the teams, freshman JV varsity, all received over a 90?
I'd have to confirm with Regan, this comes from Regan, but I believe this is the varsity level.
So these are all varsity?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna say, that's a lot of students that are getting over a 90.
Yes, I'm pretty certain that's the varsity.
And then the other question I just had was regarding the Screenagers, is that for parents and children?
Yes.
Or is it just a parent? Okay. Thank you.
Good questions. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Damian. Now we move on to superintendent information. Murray?
Thank you. I just have one item tonight, and this is about our fall recycling extravaganza that happened at Farnsworth Middle School on October 28th. Renee Panetta, who is our recycling coordinator, shared a report of the many thousands of pounds of materials that were brought to the middle school that day. Perhaps most important, we had 34 middle school and high school students who came to volunteer that day to help out. We had 300 cars come through with 3,500 pounds of mixed recyclables, 2,650 pounds of bikes, including trikes and assorted scooters, 1,520 pounds of books, 12,500 pounds of metals, 12,000 pounds of electronics, 5,000 pounds of furniture, 3,300 pounds of household goods, 2,430 pounds of clothing and textiles, 7,500 plastic bags, 800-plus bottles and assorted cares, bags of personal care items and medical supplies totaling 250 pounds. So our total collection was 25 and 1/3 tons, that's over 50,000 pounds of recycling. So just a tremendous event. I always appreciate it because my basement is just a little cleaner afterward. So you can plan for the spring. The spring event is planned for April 28th at Farnsworth Middle School. So thank you, Renee, and everyone who participated.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next we move to board president information items. This evening, we have a variety of policies that are provided for a first read. Barbara, would you like to comment on any of these?
The wellness policy is just, seems to be a yearly review.
Just right now, we're at the information item, so.
Oh, you're just doing the information?
Yep. So these are the ones that are here for a first read. The first one is executive session and then use of timeout.
There weren't major changes in any of these particular policies.
Okay, great. The next information item under board president information is that as a reminder, our December 19th meeting is no longer a regular meeting of the board. We will use that time for a board retreat facilitated by Mr. Robert Hendricks. On that evening, we will plan to start at 6:00 p.m. in the district office. Are there any questions about that? I think everybody has committed to attending this, so it should be useful. I think everybody has committed to attending this, so it should be useful.
And dinner will be available at five-thirty. We're ordering from Panera's if that...
Oh, nice.
Very good.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I just backtrack. One of the policies on the physical restraints is one that we don't have, so that's a new policy that we're taking a look at.
Okay, is this something that was recommended by NISBA? Okay. All right, thank you. Now, we move on to action items, school business management. Neil?
Okay, thank you, Christine. First item this evening is the State Environmental Quality Review Act Resolution and Determination. So, in the 2017-18 budget, funds were included for the replacement of the elevator at the middle school. So, no replacement in kinds, we're going to use the existing chapa, replace all the components of the elevator. As part of that, school districts are required to conduct an environmental impact assessment when considering a facilities construction project. Board of Education, as the local governing body, is required to identify and mitigate significant environmental impacts of the activity it's proposing. Fortunately, we're able to use Jeff Honeywell in this process to help us with that determination. He's our school attorney. He reviewed the project and advises you that the proposed facilities improvements do not pose significant environmental impacts. Typically, environmental impacts would occur with new additions, newer expanded parking lots, or athletic fields. Typically, it's not work done within the building and building footprint that wouldn't rise to that level. It sets the work is within the existing building. His determination, which he's recommended to you, is that there's no significant environmental impacts resulting from the project, and you should declare a type-two action, which is part of the resolution, meaning that no further action is required.
Okay.
And this is a roll-call vote.
A roll-call vote, okay. May I have a motion to approve the resolution? Judy, second, Gloria, are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, so we can do the roll-call. Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mrs. Frederico?
Yes.
Mrs. Jito?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tohill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is resolution to establish a facilities committee. And this is an outgrowth of a recent Business Practices Committee where Cliff Noonie attended, and we discussed upcoming facilities needs. And the belief, from the district's point of view at this time, is that we need to start planning our next capital construction project. We do have several needs throughout the district in terms of our facilities, and we would like to start that process of evaluating those needs and determining whether, in fact, we should proceed with bond referendum and capital construction project. In order to do that, a process that we've adopted in this district is to start with a district-wide facilities committee, where we bring people together, work with our architects and construction management firm, and explore the list of needs, evaluate that, assess that, and the committee helps to formulate a recommendation to the Board of Education in terms of what they would recommend in terms of the most needed improvements. So, the composition of the committee, we've looked at what we've done in the past, we've made a couple modifications, but essentially, it's pretty much is what we've done in the past. We're indicating that it should have a Board of Education representative. The superintendent of schools will be on the committee, as well as myself, Damian Singleton, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Development, Cliff Noonie, our Director of Facilities, one elementary principal, one secondary principal or assistant or house principal, and the instructional administrator for math, science, and technology, a maintenance mechanic, a representative for the Gilderlin Office Workers Association, three representatives from the Gilderlin Teachers Association, three parent-teacher association or community representatives, and two high school representatives. The last time, we did not have any high school representative, but as we thought about it, those are the students that are in the building, they have a different perspective than the adults, and we felt that was valuable to try to capture during this process as well. So, that's the recommendation in terms of the formation of the committee. I've also outlined some upcoming dates, if the committee is established. We would like to start selecting those members in January, so we would have to prove the composition first, and then, if so, we would go forward and identify who those individuals would be and bring them to the board to accept. We would also need to appoint an architect and construction manager to assist with the project, with the process, which would be basically helping us understand what the issues are in terms of facilities' needs, describing them, assessing them, what it costs to them, and working through that process. There would be, the architect would do an existing building condition and facilities evaluation as part of the process as well. Committee meetings would occur basically from March to June. At the end of June, there would be a final report by the committee to the Board of Education with a recommendation. Over the summer, the board would have time to review that report and digest it and discuss it. And then, in September or October, we would be looking for the board's direction in terms of a final project scope and bond referendum amount. If so, we would use September and October to prepare for bond referendum and probably conduct the bond referendum vote in November of 2018. And despite this process, given what has to happen after that in terms of the design of the project, State Education Department review and approval, which is lengthy, we're actually not looking at construction to start until 2020 to get through this entire process. So, even though we're in the tail end of 2017, beginning of 2018, we're still more than two years away from any construction being able to start, just by the length of this process.
Okay, great, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the establishment of the facilities committee? Kathy, second, Seema, are there any questions or comments? Yes, Kathy?
We did discuss this in the Business Practices Committee and the recommendation of the committee that we do this.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a resolution to accept delinquent tax rolls and composite tax collection report. So, we just completed our tax collection process. Every year, some taxpayers do not pay, there's an attempt to make to collect that, and if we don't collect them by November fifteenth, we're able to take those unpaid tax collections and turn them over to the county. The county will make us whole in the spring, so they will attempt to collect the money. Whether they collect it or not, we will still get the full amount of our tax revenue from the county. So, right now, we're looking at unpaid taxes of just shy of one point five million dollars across the four towns.
Okay. Oh, may I have a motion to approve the resolution to accept the delinquent tax rolls and composite tax collection report? Barbara, second, Gloria, questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero.
Our percentages are getting better. Ninety-seven point nine percent.
Yeah, it's up a little bit, and the unpaid bill is down a little bit. Over the last two years, it's gone down a little bit, so...
Sounds like a lot.
I know, but it's...
Yes, it is. Next is a resolution to approve the annual renewal of the Uniform MOP and MAT Service Bid with UniFirst Corporation, effective January first, 2018, for the third year of a fifty-four-month agreement.
May I have a motion to approve the Uniform MOP and MAT Service Bid? Gloria, second, Judy, questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero.
Okay, next is a resolution to approve an agreement with SUNY Plattsburgh for our school district to accept students for internship and practicum experience and authorizing the superintendent of schools to execute the agreement.
May I have a motion to approve the internship agreement? Teresa, second, Kathy, questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero.
Next is a resolution to establish non-resident tuition rates for the current school year. The rates are as followed: For students in grades K six, the rate is eleven thousand, or the tuition cost is eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. For grades seven, twelve, the tuition is eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. And this is formulas that are generated by the state of New York, so they have a formula to do that, and they calculate the amounts based on data that we supply.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the establishment of the non-resident tuition rates for the 2017-18 school year? Judy, second, Kathy, are there any questions or comments on this?
Do we have any?
I believe we do this year, tuition-paying students.
Not this year, no.
How come it's established like halfway through the year?
Because it uses data that we submit to the state in the fall, and...
So, people register, and they don't know what they're going to pay?
Right, we develop an estimated rate, and then, we adjust based on whatever the state tells us, so...
Just seems off.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero.
And then, finally, this evening, we do have two more donations in musical equipment. So, we received a Baby Grand piano from Mr. Wilson Sumner, and a digital piano and stand from Mr. John Connolly.
That's really nice.
Yes.
Wow.
May I have a motion to approve the donations? Barbara, second, Gloria, are there any other questions or comments, again, besides thank you for the very generous donations?
Where does the Baby Grand go?
I did not ask Dr. Hershen Hart that question. She was ecstatic to receive it, though.
I'm sure. But I don't know that, she told me which building it was going to be. It's a decent-sized piano, so I'm sure where it would go.
Estatic, she's ecstatic.
Neil, so how does the Baby Grand piano get here? Do we pick it up, or...
We're paying, we're paying, there's a piano mover that's going to move it. So, she's made the arrangements, we'll pay for that. It's a few hundred dollars, so, but she told me the piano's probably worth about seven thousand dollars, so... A small price, small token to pay for it, such a nice instrument, so...
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero. Thank you, Neil.
Right.
And now, we move to board president action items. We have one item for approval this evening, and that is the wellness policy, policy number fifty-four oh five. Barbara, did you want to say a few words on this?
Not really.
Okay. I know you started to, this is an annual, sort of...
Pretty much an annual thing. They're constantly tweaking this on the federal level, and then, it has to be reflected down to the state level. I think we've done this like six or seven times in the last seven years, so...
Okay.
It's just tweaking the policy. And Linda has always been ahead of the curve. She's done a phenomenal job here in this district.
Great. Can I have a motion to approve the wellness policy? Seema, second, Barbara, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven-zero. Okay, now, we move on to board committee reports. The first committee is audit.
That's me. We met on December, or December, November thirtieth, and we discussed a few items. BOCs came in and audited our special education...
Medicaid.
Medicaid. There was a few areas that need to be addressed, that, well, not need to be, but recommended to be addressed. One is which they said that they found that simple things like scripts were not being, what's the word I want to look for, checked or validated and received, like all of those things. That needs to be looked at a little bit more better so that we can get paid for things that we're providing services for. I had all that stuff documented, and I came from my daughter's basketball game, so I'm really trying to remember what the other two items were. Can you help me, Neil?
Would you like me to jump in?
Yeah.
The other areas, we talked about areas of internal audit, special areas of internal audits. We have the internal auditor in every year, and they do a risk assessment, which is to look at our internal controls, but as part of their service, they also work with the audit committee to determine whether there's a special area that they would, we would want them to review. So, they came back with a few ideas about what the committee might, or what the auditor might be able to do in terms of their additional time. Where we settled was on looking at some of the permissions and access to our financial management system software, so what rights do people have, what payroll, human resources, accounting, you know, what modules do they have access to, and making sure that people are being terminated when they leave, and are only given permissions for utilities that they need to work with or aspects of the financial system. So, that's where they're going to spend their time this time around. We did have claims auditor reports for September and October that were reviewed and approved by the committee as well, and then, the committee also looked at the audit committee charter, which is an annual review process. They reviewed again and did not recommend any changes, but that annual review was completed.
And we haven't decided as to when we're meeting yet.
I'm sorry, Teresa, I can't hear you.
We haven't decided as to when we're meeting yet, the doodle hasn't gone out for the next meeting.
Thank you. Business practices, Kathy?
Oh, we talked about the facilities committee, which we just established. Also, we heard about proposed bus purchases and vehicle, other maintenance vehicle replacement. And just in general, the proposal for bus purchases is a Dodge Caravan and nine buses. Also, of note was that included in the purchase price of the buses is an upgraded camera system for the passenger buses, and we saw some pictures of different types of camera systems, which is interesting. And I think with the, the other equipment replacement was a couple of vans and a two-thousand, replacing a two-thousand-three big gang mower. And we heard about the proposed, some of the proposed work that would be done in the new capital project and a proposed timeline. So, we just did the approval to form the facilities committee. It's proposed to be formed in January, do its work, and report in June 2018, and then, then the board would discuss this in August, and then, there would be a public vote on the referendum in November 2018. And construction would go on from summer 2020 to fall 2021. That's the proposed timeline, and then, there were a lot of different things on a list, just things that need doing at the different schools. And that's what we, and we're meeting again to discuss budgetary issues. We have two meetings, and I don't have it in front of me, I think they're both in March, so...
Twenty-second and twentieth, or something like that.
Something like that.
Both at the same time, four-thirty or something?
Yeah, four-thirty to six-thirty.
Thank you, Kathy.
March twenty-second and twenty-seventh.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Communications Committee, Gloria?
Yes, we will be meeting this Thursday at eight o'clock, so, and...
In the morning.
In the morning, yes, AM, thank you. And we'll be working a lot on the budget and community engagement, ideas like that. We also collected, and we only, we heard back from, I think, five or six of the board members on revisions to Section One of the handbook, and Section Two is due December nineteenth, so if you could make a note, if you have any ideas for changes, we'll take them then.
We're meeting at Farnsworth, right?
Yes.
Yes, we're meeting at, oh, thank you, yeah, we're meeting at the Learning Center Classroom in Farnsworth, so go up through the library and take a quick write.
Okay, thank you. Policy?
We were scheduled to have a meeting tomorrow morning, but we've canceled that because we're waiting to hear from the stakeholders that we're going to address the policy, so we'll set up another one probably in January.
Okay, and then, can we briefly discuss the public comment that we had this evening? Is that a policy that you think?
Well, certainly.
Okay. All right, great. Now, we move on to public comment number two. Linda, do we have anybody sign up this evening?
Nobody.
Board issues, ideas, and sharing. Judy?
I wanted to talk briefly about the presentation that we had at our last meeting from Linwood, and how exciting it was to see, and how good it felt to see what a difference this type of coaching has made for Linwood. And then, I was discouraged to hear that, well, of course, the Linwood scores went up because they lost, or all of their BOCs classes are no longer there, so I wondered, Damian, if you could address what's right about, you know, where are the scores? Are they in fact as high as what was presented, or is it just the BOCs?
It's absolutely what was presented. It's absolutely what was presented. The BOCs classes don't factor into the scores whatsoever. BOCs students who are attending the BOCs programs that are simply housed in our districts are by and large students from other districts, so their scores apply to their home district, even though the programs are housed here. So over the years, we have BOCs programs that might move from one building to the next. There's no implication on the scores in the building that they've left, nor is there an implication on the scores in the building that has received those programs. They don't factor in one way or the other.
So we can continue to be very proud of what's happened, and then we are moving now towards getting more in another school, another coaching?
We're having discussions about what that might look like, as you've heard from Linwood and from Principal Rizzo. There's a lot that goes into it.
Yes.
It's not simply the staffing piece, but it's building the capacity, the professional development, making sure that the buildings are ready to move in that direction, so we're...
But it makes a significant difference, then.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Definitely worth it, and I thought it was a great presentation. It was, felt good to see the success that's been achieved. I wanted to make sure that we mentioned that.
Anyone else?
I got the chance to go over to the middle school and help out at the book fair, and I just think that having that opportunity for kids at the PTA and the parents get together and do that, it's a lot of work, but the kids really appreciate it, and I know the teachers do too, so thank you to the PTA at Farnsworth.
Thank you, PTA's all over.
All over, but particularly this one.
Anyone else? Okay, there's no further business to come before the board. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Barbara, second. Teresa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass is seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, I appreciate it.
Oh, great, yeah.